All right, let's get started for the study session of April twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty one. All right, so we're gonna start off with Mr. Jay Harris. He's gonna make a quick presentation before we begin our discussion.
Yeah, good evening, Council. Jay Harris, your Public Works Director. Good to see everyone this evening. FCS Group is our consultant working on the project. And John and team, there they are, they're there. So they have a short presentation, six, seven slides to sort of remind everybody where the things we've talked about in the past. John has another commitment tonight. He has to depart at six thirty from what I understand. So if Council has questions about the rate structure and those sorts of things, well, John's here, that would be great. If not, we can, our Togi can answer them after John leaves too. If we can't answer some of those, we'll get back to you, but if you have some heavy hitters, let's really get John, okay? Because he's here for a half hour, okay? So John, Togi, it's all yours.
All right, thank you, Jay. I'm gonna share. Presentation, can you guys see that, okay? All right. As Jay mentioned, it's gonna be very quick with the presentation materials. Nothing new tonight, just a quick review and then we can get into Q and A, hopefully pretty quickly. Just a quick refresher, you know, stormwater utility is both program intensive and capital intensive. I won't go through all these items again, but there's quite a few things that the stormwater utility does on the programmatic side. Maintenance, education and outreach, compliance, capital projects, not to mention handling water quality and water quantity issues. In addition to that, stormwater utility is capital intensive. Quite a list of assets that the utility currently has and needs to take care of. And in addition to that, there's a six-year capital improvement program as a part of the city's adopted budget. So in addition to maintaining these assets, there are quite a few projects that need to be completed in the next six years. And when we forecast out both the operating and capital expenditures, you can see on this graph here that in the dark bars, we have the operating and maintenance expenditures. Twenty twenty one is based on the city's adopted budget. And then going forward, there is one additional FTE to help the city maintain its permit compliance. And then after that, inflationary level increases to existing programmatic costs. On top of that, rate-funded capital, this is essentially an annual provision from rate revenues that gets turned around right away to pay for senior capital projects or in some cases, saving in advance for larger capital project every so often. And you can see that over time, the operating and capital costs combined to be nearly two million dollars by twenty twenty five and just above two million dollars per year by twenty twenty six. Compared to what is currently being generated by rates under eight hundred thousand dollars per year. These are what we call, you know, unfunded financial obligations that are forecast for the stormwater utility. In order to fund those operating and capital needs, we have a rate schedule at the bottom of this slide. Also incorporates these rate credits that we've talked about in previous presentations. Single-family customers would pay a flat amount per month, starting July first. What is currently twelve dollars and ten cents per month would increase to seventeen seventy-one per month. There's that twenty percent discount for low-income senior disabled customers. Duplexes would be paying two equivalent service units, two ESUs, so thirty-five forty-two. And then all other developed parcels would pay on a per two thousand nine hundred impervious square feet basis. That ESU is defined as twenty-nine hundred impervious square feet. So you take your parcel, add up all the impervious area, divided by twenty-nine hundred impervious square feet, and that's your number of ESUs per parcel multiplied by seventeen seventy-one. And then going forward, we've incorporated three percent increase per year. And that's to help generate a little bit more funding for some of the programmatic and capital costs as we expect those to increase in the future. Last slide, recommendation for the general facilities charge. This is something that's already in place for the water and sewer utilities, not yet for the stormwater utility. Based on existing assets and planned capital projects in the future, we calculated a GFC for the stormwater utility of eight hundred and seventy-nine dollars per ESU. Again, based on that per ESU basis, so every two thousand nine hundred impervious square feet for commercial multifamily-type parcels, as they develop and connect to the system, would pay eight hundred and seventy-nine dollars. New single-family homes would pay one ESU, for example. And that's the end of the quick overview. And of course, we want to open it up for questions for myself or John or other city staff.
All right, guys, anybody have questions here? Who wants to start the discussion off? Looks like Kathy McDowell.
So I have several questions. We're talking about impervious paving. What if we went to impervious paving?
Yeah, so Council McDowell, what happens is, is if you like have a parking lot and you want to put impervious pavers or impervious concrete, impervious asphalt, those are not impervious surfaces and you don't get charged for that, like on a commercial parking lot for the stormwater utility, for the impervious pavement. Impervious surfaces all would still get charged, you know, per every twenty-nine hundred square feet. So that's part of the Department of Ecology Stormwater Manual that encourages low-impact development alternatives or LEED as the acronym. And that impervious pavement is one of them. And so if you go to the parking lot downtown, Mason Transit, we assisted them with that project. Those are impervious pavers. We're looking at trying to do impervious pavers in the Civic Center parking lot also. And we'll see, obviously, they're more expensive, you have cost ramifications. But then you also don't have to, a lot of instances have, you get offset by reduced storm infrastructure costs, the pipe to treat, that sort of thing. So it's a pretty interesting equation.
So, so it would be less expensive for a person to do the impervious versus impervious?
It depends on the site. Impervious, yes, so impervious pavement costs two to three times the amount of money, depending on the site conditions, depending on traffic loading. So like the port of Portland, in Portland, wanted, they had a huge shipyard and they wanted to do it all permeable asphalt. Well, they have huge trucks that go in and out of there. They ended up with like a foot of asphalt on like twelve inches of rock. It costs way more money to do that than it would have been to do something standard. But they have some goals, other goals in mind and that sort of thing. So it all is dependent on the site counselor and how it pays back. But typically, permeable pavement is more expensive to put in initially. And then over time, it can fail if you don't maintain it properly. And maintaining it properly means you have to vacuum it every couple of years. That's our new streets people will be able to do that, so that will be a benefit to the city. You can't dump bark dust on it or loads of gravel or loads of sand. You don't want to leave tree leaves on it, you know, that plug up the porosity of the pavement. So there's challenges with it over conventional systems.
Are we looking at a rate increase for somebody who does impervious?
No, they would be credited, the impervious, it wouldn't even be charged that surface.
Okay, I got that.
Okay.
And one more, is there any way of having some funding outside? Like, some funding to help people with this project, with these projects?
So what are you talking about, like installing water quality type of facilities or detention basins or yards, like stormwater planters and yards?
Right, yeah.
Okay, yeah, so Mason Conservation District is already doing that with some of our property owners in the town. And Council, this is in your direction. I mean, if you want to have staff over the coming years, start and end the budgeting process, set up some funds to go do some things like this, I mean, this program's in its infancy right now, right? And so we're listening to you and listen to the community of how we move forward.
Okay, and one more question. On that rate structure, I see that Bremerton has a larger population than Shelton, but their rates are lower than Shelton. How, how do you explain that? Do you know why that is?
Hey, Togi, John, have you guys delved into that?
Well, it's, it's very hard to make apples-to-apples comparisons between and among different cities. We've shown, and I don't think we showed you the slide this time, but we've shown you the slide in the past that has those comparable rates from all over the region. If we were to look at some cities on the other side of the sound, you know, there are several over twenty dollars a month already and, and a number of similar size to Shelton, a number of them between fifteen and twenty. Everybody's system is different and the needs are different. So, you know, in some ways, it's harder for a smaller-sized city to have low rates because some of those costs, these program costs are fixed, that you have to, you have to, you have to do some of these activities to comply with regulatory requirements. And there's just a smaller customer base over which to spread those costs. So we do see that happen. I, I can't tell you specifically why the differences, other than all, everybody's needs and programs are different from city to city. I hope that helps. The rate structures are overwhelmingly, the majority of the rate structures are the proposed rate structure that you're seeing tonight, that ESU approach.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, does anybody else have something to discuss?
I've got a question for John while he's still here. So in your research and taking a look at the different cities that are using this model, this fifty-fifty equity piece between businesses and the constituents or, you know, are you seeing, you know, like we were coming from a seventy-thirty position, you know, where business is paying seventy percent, or excuse me, our constituents are paying seventy percent to families and then we've got thirty percent being paid by our businesses currently. And so when you're looking at those other cities, even with this new rate structure, where are they landing? Are they at that fifty-fifty mark or?
So, and I'm, I'm, I hate to sound like a broken record, but it really depends on the type of community. So Togi and I did a big, we've done a couple of recent rate studies for, well, one of them was for the city of Sumamish, which is not a comparable city. I know they're very high income, but they are extremely residential. They have hardly any commercial base there. So their revenue profile is more like yours is now. Seventy is far more residential revenue generated than commercial. If you were to look at a city like Redmond or Burlington up I five, even Olympia, you know, there's, or Bremerton, much more of a commercial base. So they're gonna generate a lot more revenue from their commercial customers. So seventy-thirty for a city like Shelton is definitely skewed toward residential. And what, what our hope is, not because we think commercials should be charged more, but because we think it's a more fair, you know, profile for where that revenue comes from, that that's gonna shift a little bit to commercial as a result of this rate structure. It'll be closer to fifty-fifty, but that's just a byproduct of where the impervious surface area is between residential and commercial customers.
You, you may have given us this information in other meetings. Is the, is the ESUs for new construction for businesses, let's say, or other, we call it other, is it always the one amount times every ESU? Or is there discounts for these businesses that negotiated discounts for these businesses?
There, there are a couple of limited discounts available. And, and then for a large commercial industrial customer with its own NPDES permit,
I know that one.
Okay, okay.
I'm not talking about that one, talking about somebody building another Walmart or Costco. Would, would there be discounts?
Yeah, so Brooke and I, in the ordinance materials that you should receive soon, and I don't know if you've looked at your package for the next meeting, but there's a discount section in there. And currently, we have a discount if you do rainwater harvesting. That is where you take water, put it into underground vaults or bladders or drums or whatever for commercial property owners and run it through your toilets and that sort of thing. The state of Washington, RCW, requires that we offer a minimum of a ten, it's minimum of a ten percent discount for that, right? So that's the current credit that we have for commercial users in, in the current ordinance. So if there's questions of that, you know, we can talk about it more at the next meeting at the first ordinance hearing. Are you more than happy, if you want to email us, we can, you know, talk to Council that way or talk to Manager Knight about it? If you have some other ideas?
Yeah, we just got a packet within the last hour, I believe, so no, I have not read it.
Okay, okay, but yeah, rainwater harvesting.
All right.
I have one more, Kevin. I'm sorry, I have one more question. Would the, would the normal typical resident building a home, would they be able to do that same process as a big Walmart or Costco as far as storing it in the ground and using it?
Yes, you could, but there currently is no discount for that. So you see a lot of people that take their gutter water and put it into barrels and then go use it in their garden and that sort of thing. No, there, there isn't credits for that right now for rainwater harvesting for residential. We're following what the state has and it's for commercial.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Sorry, I'm taking a few notes here, but, all right, so are we gonna discuss tonight a little bit about the rates for each household? The percentage, the discount percentage for our two larger permitted commercial sites? Jeff, you have a?
We can, we can, Mr. Mayor, that's entirely up to Council. If that's an element that Council would like to discuss, be happy to talk to you about it.
Does anybody have any questions about that?
Well, perhaps before we hop into that, I did have a couple of other questions for FCS Group.
Okay.
Before we move on, if that is all right. John, you had mentioned, you know, there are certain fixed costs that go along with this system, certainly. Can you give us an idea of, you know, what percentage of the overall budget is fixed costs versus variable costs? Or is there a certain per year cost that is attributed to fix? Because one of the things that we looked at is, there's a certain amount of, you know, runoff to the system from those impervious surfaces, and there's a certain amount that is a product of using the system as a whole, driving on the roadways, those types of things. So when you're discussing fixed costs, could you delve into that just a bit?
So, so we did a very high-level analysis of, you know, what, what, what costs would go away if everybody mitigated their own stormwater runoff on-site? And that figuring that what was left were essentially fixed costs of the program. And that was about sixty percent of the, of the program costs being the fixed part. So, and, and it's kind of theoretical because we know that you, we, we're not gonna get everybody to make their own stormwater runoff disappear. But if so, that's what we, we believe would be the, the program that remained.
Thank you. And to clarify, gravel is considered an impervious surface for the purposes of these calculations, is that correct?
Yes, and that's consistent with the, the definition we see around the state because when it gets compacted, it is essentially impervious.
And I'm reasonably confident too, we don't have really many stormwater best management practices that would incorporate the use of like a gravel surface or something like that, right? In the city, it would all have to be vegetated of some sort. That's a concern that I have just due to the fact that we have no curving gutter and sidewalk in a lot of our residential areas of the city. So we're talking about the capital side of this, the capital costs. I'm, I'm, I don't know, I don't wanna say concerned, but I believe we have some pretty significant capital costs that we don't know about just yet. And we, because it's the infancy of the program, if you drive around and you look and you see gravel-filled bio swales and other sort of best management practices used to treat stormwater, those are all things within the city right away that we're essentially gonna have to repair or replace back to its original state. That is extremely expensive. And those are things that keep us out of compliance with the NPDES permit. So I guess, you know, when you do a high-level comparison or you do a high-level outlook of it, we gotta start somewhere, I totally agree with that. But I have concerns that our program in the first five to ten years of implementation, there's going to be some pretty steep, I'll call it corrective maintenance type of work, not necessarily capital improvements, just getting things back to the way that they were supposed to be. And I would not necessarily classify those as capital improvements. I would classify that as reservation and maintenance activities. So therefore, are our rates sort of structured that way to respond to, you know, some of these illicit discharges and other, other scenarios similar to that?
So Counselor Schmidt, I, I have some answers to that. So the ditches that you see along the roadside are conveyance facilities, no different than a pipeline, okay? So a pipe could take the place of that. The majority of those were never intended to be bio swales, to filter the water, to detain water, to do all that. Because those regulations are pretty new to the city, a lot of these developments are really old, right? And so all they were was ways to get water from A to B. The reason why you see gravel in them is because of the curve, the lack of curbing. The shoulder rock is getting down in there. On steeper roadways, the rock is purposely put in there because the conveyance facility is eroding and it's taken out the road or the bank or whatever. So we purposely do put rock in ditches. So we do go and clean out the ditches as it plug up. My former job, we cleaned two miles of ditches every year. We redug them, all vegetation gone, put straw back down, got them to reconvey because they're conveyance facilities, not bio filters. So if we had more curves in the city though, it would keep people from driving in these conveyance facilities, filling in the conveyance facilities, parking in them. And it would actually probably improve them because people are compacting the soil because they're driving all over their yards and places you really normally shouldn't be for good stormwater management practices. So the benefit of the grass swales today is, yes, we are getting some filtration out of them. But the primary goal, the reason why they're originally put in is to transmit the stormwater downstream, right? So you are correct though, that there are things we don't know about, okay? In this city that will probably affect us on our operations and maintenance side. Next year, we're proposing a update to the stormwater capital plan. So in the budget, there's a six-year plan. That came from two thousand and seven, a report that OTAC did. That's getting a little old, right? Those costs in there are really old. So in next year's budget, you're going to see the start of, just like we're working on water and sewer right now, we're gonna work on stormwater next year. So some of these conversations are gonna happen then. Also, I would highly recommend the city to do a rate, this type of rate update every two years, three years maybe. I'm used to every two years in my former job. And the consultant, if they're doing regular updates, it doesn't cost a lot of money every two years. That way, we're doing check-ins with you guys, check-ins on the rate and on the capital program, the general facilities charges, and it all keeps you from jumping up and down like the yo-yo, I guess you could say, right? Then if you're checking in on your rates every couple of years, and typically I'm used to doing sewer, water and storm all at the same time. So you guys will be hearing it all at the same time, you know, in different meetings, obviously. Very, very beneficial to our rate structure and these types of conversations.
So ultimately, where I was going with that was just saying that we need to be cautious when we're developing the rate structure moving forward, simply because there's a significant amount of unknowns. And I'm not saying we need to, we shouldn't be conservative with the way that we're budgeting for this, but I believe we should be contemplating the fact that there may be some expensive projects that we're going to have to deal with in a timely manner. Things that are not gonna necessarily be able to wait once we're, once they're known. And my question will be, where is the money gonna come from? What service are we gonna be interested in either reducing a level of service? We know where our budget standpoint is today, so we need to make, you know, these conscious decisions when we're, when we're looking at this, that, yes, and then, you know, and then if everything pans out and is rosy, then we can have a conversation about how we, you know, stabilize rates or we stabilize our, our plans moving forward, right? And I agree, I think we should be checking in on rates, probably on a more frequent schedule. I don't even particularly know off the top of my head what the, what the schedule would be, but two years might be, might be a little bit too soon. But I would agree though, that it needs to be on a set frequency as well.
Yeah, Councilmember, so a couple of things with that. One, we want to do these things so that the increases aren't for different, jumping up five bucks. And then the other part, the road, or the, the projects themselves, they're typically funded not only up of stormwater, but also some road funds as well. And then there, you know, how we divvy up those project costs depends on the individual project. But the rate structure is also intended to meet your desired reserve policy that was adopted a little bit earlier this year. So if something unforeseen does come up, we'll have the resources to take care of that.
I have a couple operational type of questions, not necessarily rate, and I can wait for later on if, if we want to. So back to you, Mayor Dorsey, you can, anybody else who's got questions?
I've got a question, Mayor. Is that okay? Oh, you're on mute, Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry, I was on mute. Go ahead, Megan.
Thank you. So as we are discussing usage and the system as a whole, and I'm learning still a lot about our infrastructure and, you know, like the fixed assets, the things that we do have to take care of. So I'm curious if you can teach me some more about total amount of residential line that we have and the total amount of more the routes that our, our whole community think. Because I think that that might help us understand. Um, because I think that that might help us understand also the more of the usage. Um, and 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 that percentage. I just think about, you know, myself, my my, you know, neighborhood and. You know, if if it if if it helps us, you know, improve and be able to get sidewalks and get those things fixed, you know. Um, that's something that. Myself as a citizen, I I'd be interested in understanding more about and understanding how what my contribution is too, because not only do I. You know, utilize our city streets, you know, down with our businesses, but I also use. All the different residential streets too. I think that's really important, and I think for us as a whole. Um, one of the things that I had asked for, gosh, a couple of months now ago from staff was. An understanding of the impact of our small businesses across that um rate structure. Um, you know, if I think about the small sole proprietor downtown. You know, and right now, while we're going through a pandemic, we're talking about, you know, a thousand dollar increase to a bit. So I think that we need to think about that and and I agree with Joe. I I think that we have to figure out what our. Sustainable funding structure is, I think we got to think about. Let's be for real about what's going on underneath our our pavement here and. There there may be an opportunity for um some offset costs because of the rest, the amount of residential line that we have. So anybody have any enlightened enlightened for me?
Yeah, I guess I, could you repeat what the question is?
So per capita, you know, how much residential line do we have going down residential streets and how? How much basically um business line do we have going down our arterial, our main arterials and whatnot?
You mean, you mean traffic counts, right? Just the number of trips generated?
Well, uh, traffic counts and, you know, when we take a look at our footprint. And our main arterials compared to our more residential areas. You know, what it, what is our our lineage foot, our our lineage foot? Uh, that we're trying to take care of. I mean, when I think about like, again, the whole system. We're all using the main arterials. But it's the residents that are using the residential ones.
Uh, I believe there was a as one of the slides that um is on is in the packet shows. The number of assets and everything like that. I don't know if it has linear footage, so I'm just want to take a look real quick and see if it has.
Something for us to be thinking about, you know, and I'm all about, I absolutely am, so that's why I'm asking. You know, we have to build our budget. We have to do that, but we have to also take a look. You know, who 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 is using this? Again, you know, our our sole proprietor downtown is looking at a thousand dollar increase. And um, I think that we really need to be thoughtful about. You know, do we go to that fifty fifty structure at this point? Do we think about? You know, what what? What that that balance is, you know, and and maybe we have a goal eventually to grow as a community. You know, to get and and bring in more businesses to get to that fifty fifty structure. But I I think that we need to take a look deeper dive into, you know, what are those fixed asset assets? Or and who who is running running across both?
Yeah, so I just took a a real quick look through the packet and that number uh is not uh not in there. But we can have that for you at the next um council meeting on the fourth.
I think the I think the difficulty with some of this too is is remembering. Stormwater and sewer and water, very different. Uh, some very different things, right? Um, the stormwater system, not not like the uh sewer system or the water system. It's a combination of a whole bunch of different things, right? And um, not all of those components of the system, right, are. Are something that people can just subscribe to, right? Uh, it's not like a specific uh pipe or. Uh, it's a combination of, I guess, multiple things, right? And there's a lot of contributions to our stormwater and our storm drainage. Um, that is the traveling public, non-residential, commercial, residential only, it's a combination of several different things. So I guess at the end of the day, you know, when we're looking at who generates the most trips. Um, is it the residential customer or is it the commercial customer? And and then what is that level of impact um as a result of that, right? So that's kind of how we have to weigh this out as opposed to. Um, kind of flipping a coin or, you know, taking comparables and trying to compare to other cities because there's just so many unique things here. Um, and we're so early on in the process, I have to put a lot of faith and trust in the consulting activity, you know, we brought in FCS group to advise us on. They 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 worked with uh city staff. So a lot of me is putting, you know, a lot of trust in staff and a lot of trust in this process with the reassurance that if in two years. You know, uh, we're way off base, we will course correct and, you know, we'll get back, we'll get back on on target. But I I have a lot of faith that we're we're moving in the right direction. Um, I do believe at this point, you know, not all ratepayers are uh sort of treated the same in this and. I'm a I'm a fan of taking the equitable approach, which is based on trip generation and impacts of the system. And so far, I recommend it is that seventy thirty sort of split. Uh, so that's where my comfort is at right now. Um, because I don't really have any other data to prove kind of otherwise at this point.
Yeah, uh, Mr. Mayor, if I uh can ask you to mute your mic, we're getting a little bit of feedback uh across the the thing. So two ways to break it down, one is the linear foot of residential versus collector versus minor arterial versus arterial, like you, what you were talking about, the other way. Uh, council of fees, uh, the other way is the way that uh council member Schmidt uh was uh discussing and that's trip count. Um, you know, you get a gas station, for instance, has a whole lot more trips than a residential house does. Uh, and generates those trips and that's part of the way we decide, um, you know, where to put an arterial road or what to classify as an arterial road. Uh, it's based on the number of trips. Um, but we can have those numbers for you uh at the next meeting for sure.
I mean, the seventy thirty split, is that just be because there's more residents, more homes than there are businesses in the city limits?
It's the other way.
I'm sorry, reverse it. So it's okay.
It's, yeah, it's uh thirty percent residential, seventy percent.
Oh.
Commercial.
Seventy percent of the residents are paying. The the most part of of the storm drain now. So no, my my question is, the seventy thirty split is because there's more homes, more residents, and there are businesses in the city limits, correct?
Well, that's that's one way to look at it, but it's based on impervious surface.
So it's not currently, you know. Current, the way we're doing it now, the seventy thirty split is. It could be set up that way in the beginning because there are more homes than there are businesses in the city limits.
The way the rate structure and Brooke, correct me if I'm wrong, was adopted in oh five. Uh, and last updated in oh nine. Um, was was that tiered system, so it wasn't necessarily, you know, the total number of homes versus the total number of businesses. It was still square footage, but it was uh tiered, so you had, I. Don't remember off the top of my head, but it was, uh, you know, over was fifty five thousand square feet, it was capped.
Correct.
So any above that. Um, any impervious surface above that. Uh, you wouldn't, uh, you pay that same flat amount, whether you had fifty five thousand and one square feet or whether you had, you know, a million. Uh, you paid the same same set rate, so it wasn't total houses versus total businesses.
Yeah, so like his his um example of some manage that has no business, so they're paying a hundred percent of the stormwater over there.
Pretty close, yeah.
So. Kathy's got her hand.
Yeah. So let me give this example and see if you can help me out here. So they're talking about. A residential, they're talking about the size of the house, not the size of the lot, right?
It's the amount of impervious surface area that was calculated and we determined that with the median of a sampling group.
Okay, so let's say your house sits on a big huge lot, you have lots of grass, but you decide to do your driveway in a. Decide to do your driveway previous favors. Would there be a discount for that homeowner to do that?
Currently, they would get charged the one ESU regardless of the size of the previous surface on their lot because they're a resident.
All right.
I got an operational question. Are we ready for that? Not a not a rate, not a rate thing?
Absolutely.
Yes.
All right, cool. Um, uh, stormwater management plan, stormwater management manual, do we have one? If so, um, when when can we get a look at that and can we share that with our stakeholders and partners so they understand what our stormwater? Sort of operational side of the house, what that's going to look like, what our inspection program is going to look like, what our ongoing maintenance, what's going to, what that's going to look like, you know, what our what our BMPs are. Um, that sort of thing, is that coming with the kind of coinciding with this as well? If not, I would recommend we probably should and have some sort of educational process behind that.
Yeah, so I mean, we're following the two thousand nineteen Department of Ecology manual that uh council adopted in what, February? Um, in there for most small agencies, they follow that manual, that's sort of stormwater manual. Um, developers, engineering firms have been using this manual for a very long time. Uh, the smaller developers, property owners, that sort of thing, they don't know anything about the. That, you know, right? Well, they're going to know a lot about the manual and um and all the things that are in there, whether it's operations and maintenance or upgraded facilities or whatever. Or it's all in that manual. Um, we're required to have a significant public outreach plan. If you go look at the report, you go to the public works page on the website, go to the stormwater. And you'll see the report that we just submitted, Ken Gill prepared it. Page six through ten talks about our public outreach that we need to do. Uh, we've done some already, but obviously this is a brand new program and we're down an employee, right? So the employee is going to be doing a lot of public outreach. And if you want to go read about it, uh, go look at uh what Ken submitted uh to the Department of Ecology. A lot of good information in there. It sets out, they tell you when, you said what you've done to date. And we're certain to implement things, but you know, there's a bunch of dates that are out there in the future that we have to meet a bunch of program elements and public outreach and education is a big hitter.
Yeah, that's that is definitely going to be. Uh, you know, that's definitely going to be something I know we're gonna, we're gonna run into early on is. Hey, have you have you researched this and and here's our plan or here's the manual that we've adopted? I'm glad to hear that, um, you know, we are just uh following ecology's guidance on there and we're not reinventing the wheel or. You know, necessarily going and trying to write our own at this point. Um, I think probably as we mature in the program, it'll be beneficial to have something more custom tailored to the city, but not initially. Um, of course, right? And so I guess it's easy to be able to say to reference that, but I I'm interested, I'll be interested to hear how things are kind of going. Um, you know, down the road here, um, with those interactions, just because folks are going to be getting used to some of these changes operationally and and what that means. So there's anything you can do to help um in, you know, with that as we're talking about budget in the future or we're talking about. Um, you know, other other programs and 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 efforts and that we're that we're guiding, you know, staff on. I'd be interested to know how kind of these things are rolling together.
Yeah, so councillor Schmidt, to the stormwater uh in the engineering standards manual, we're going to be coming back to you with a revision to the standards manual down the road here. That has some stormwater components in it also that we'll be talking to you about, so more to come, lots to do. All right, guys, any more discussion?
I did just have a couple of thoughts. I'll lower my hand here. Um. I do have some consternation around implementing this right now. I recognize the fact that this system has been habitually underfunded and that as we have recognized time and again. The lack of planning for asset management and systems management has put us in a position that we are now. Making up in leaps and bounds what ought to, in my opinion, have been addressed in a very strategic gradual sort of way. But especially looking at what a tough year folks have had. You know, I and I I look at not only my neighbors and the residents who are here, but businesses who were shut down for weeks on end. And now we're talking about adding an additional GFC, um, additional rate increase and just the rate increase alone. I mean, and we took a sampling of of different um businesses and what that would look to them on an annual basis. And I don't know that some of them can afford to do that right now. I don't know that a family can afford an increase, however small, right now. That being said. I understand that we have new permit requirements. I understand that we have obligations that we have to meet, so I guess my question there is. How realistic is it to have any sort of delay and what is reasonable from staff's perspective? The second piece of that being specific to the to the GFC is we keep talking as a council and as a city about the need for. Growth and sustainable development, you know, we keep talking about we need more rooftops, we need more businesses. Um, in order to not only create a really vibrant community, but also to spread out that tax base and make it more affordable. I mean, I'm really honest, when my husband and I looked at buying a house five years ago, we would not have bought in the city except for the fact that a family home came up because it was so much more expensive. And so you look at all the things that we cannot control, things like the new state energy standards. Um, and and all of the cost of building going up everywhere, and I have some serious concern about adding one more nickel on top of one more dime. And the long term damage that can do to our growth and development for neighborhoods and for business growth. So those are some of the things that I've been kind of trying to wrap my mind around with this system. Um, and I really appreciate any comments from from the other council members and staff's perspective on on either of those items.
Well, if we would have built four hundred affordable housing, uh, that probably would have helped us offset the initial cost of this, but uh we kind of snoozed on that one.
Um, I mean, I'm concerned about the about our small businesses, Megan. Said and also Deidra about adding these astronomical increases for some of these businesses. I mean, we're talking fifteen times the amount for Sierra Pacific, probably ten times the amount for other businesses. I mean, I'm extremely concerned about these little shopping centers that. You know, are charging three thousand dollars rent when their when their storm rate goes up to fifty thousand dollars a year or twenty thousand or whatever. They're going to pass that on to everyone of their tenants. Their tenants can't afford it, they'll they'll close shop or move somewhere else where it's more cost effective, so I agree with Deidra. That. Maybe it's not, maybe we need to talk a little bit about a little lower structure, maybe we need to pause for a little bit. You know, uh. The NPDES, the two um businesses that have those, I mean, that's that's a huge increase for these businesses. Even at the seventy five percent proposed discount, it's still fifteen times the amount that they're paying now. I mean, couldn't they afford it, maybe? But I mean, what kind of message are we sending to our largest employers in the city? Oh, I'm sorry, we're going to charge you a hundred thousand dollars a year. I know you're only paying five. Um, that you you. We are already people, businesses, contractors, realtors, always say it's so expensive to do business in the city of shelter. I know we have to do something with the stormwater. I just think we need to put more thought into it.
So I guess that's why we're here tonight, guys.
Yeah.
So let's talk about it.
Hey, me. Um, I totally agree with Deidra. I totally agree with Eric. I totally agree with Joe that we need to talk about this. This is going to um. this is gonna put a real snappu on people's businesses. And it is a hardship for a lot of people with the economy, with the pandemic that we're hopefully coming out of. But still, $5 a month, that's a lot of money for some of these places and even, you know, residence, residential homes. So I, I know it's gonna need to be done, but can we put our heads together and figure out a little better solution, a little more soft solution to this?
What's your number?
I don't have a number. I, that's why I wanna talk.
So, so just to add a little context around this, the permit requirements come from the state, you, you're all aware of that, we have to meet those permit requirements. There are other ways we can fund it. As I've talked to y'all a little bit about, that would require supplementing the stormwater fund from the general fund. We can absolutely do that, but then it requires a decision about what in the general fund the council no longer wishes to do. And, you know, I can give you what all the items that are funded through the general fund. And we can run down that list and happy to do that. We have time, I mean, we set this process up so that we had time for these types of discussions if they were to come up before the July 1 date when the, the ordinance should be adopted is, would be effective. So I can absolutely run down those lists of, of items in order to keep the stormwater rates, you know, somewhere between where they're at now and somewhere where their proposed numbers are. But it will require supplemental from another fund. Because we are required to do this by the state, we don't have a choice.
Can we look at our six-year plan and maybe put some, some projects off that aren't as important? Maybe that would bring that number down a little bit, the deficit?
That's, that's also one option. You know, we can try to meet somewhere in the middle. I'm, I'm not familiar enough off the top of my head to tell you what those projects are in the six-year plan now. But Jay and I can definitely take a look at that and, and come up with something.
Yeah, and that's on the Department of Ecology's checklist is that you have to have a six-year plan and you have to fund it. So anyways, sorry guys.
No, we gotta have a six-year plan, but we don't have to have everything in that plan, I mean, we decided.
Correct, we could prioritize it and maybe eliminate a few. But we have a very old system and the stormwater utility has not been funded well, as you all, already all realize. And there are significant needs out there in the system like Counselor Schmidt said. The Shelton Creek bypass is probably one of them. That, you know, by the library, we got the pond, right? That pond is a diversion structure that sends water to the Goldsboro Creek from 1977. That system has been pretty much unmaintained since 1977. As for the other part of the system that goes down under Safeway and all that, right? So anyways, I think Counselor Schmidt was right that there are a lot of things we don't know right now. Once we get a more robust program, we're gonna find out more. That's where the fund reserves help, as Manager Knightman stated, that we want to at least maintain your minimum reserve, if not more. But anyways, it's one of those pay for it now, pay for it later type of things, you guys, I'm just being honest with you. Right? That nobody paid for it forever and you guys now have a very difficult decision to make.
Thank you.
A year ago, when I came on, I recommended to Manager Knightman, we hang onto the rope as long as we can here on the stormwater fund. So we postponed this conversation for as long as we could. And, you know, how long is too long is what your, your question is, is how much longer can we hold off on that? And the answer is, is the state, you know, might be patient for a little while longer, but we have a lot of permit requirements we gotta get going on and comply with. So we have a lot of work to do and we need to get started on it, so.
And I recognize that, and I'll say again that I, I, first thing out of my mouth was the system has been habitually underfunded. And I think the staff, more than anyone, is aware of that. And, you know, certainly we cannot continue to ignore what's happening and this has to be addressed. My question is, is there a way that we can look at graduating some of this in or phasing some of this in? Especially from a financial perspective. My concern has to do with, you know, the impact that people have had from the pandemic and what that means for families right now and what they can afford, what is meant to businesses and what they can afford to give them time to plan to, to help us fund this. Because it is going to take everyone working together to move this system forward. So, I am not saying throw the plan away. This has been an incredible amount of work from both the consultant and the staff's point. My concern is how can we roll this out in a fashion that is the least amount of pain for people who are really in a tough spot right now? Realizing that some, some things gotta give. I completely hear you.
I mean, I mean, this is a big deal, I mean, we're, we're not talking 5% increases for the next five years. I mean, we've got about the lowest ones, what, 30% increase? All the way up to what, 1,000% increase? I mean, this 30, what, $12 to $17 is what, 25% in, increase for, for residents? And then businesses, I mean, if you want to go to the top, Sierra Pacific is going from 5,000 a year to what, 100,000 a year, even with the proposed, you have some discounts. So, I mean, these are, this is a big deal, I mean.
Yeah, we have, in the ordinance, we have built in those 3% for the next six years.
But not this first one.
Well, no, because it's been underfunded chronically for decades. And now that these new phase two requirements come on, that's why we build in those increases, so we don't have to come back five years, six years from now and do the exact same thing. Which ought to have been done, you know, but that's why we're at where we're at today. Is the, there was no consideration of the rates, you know, ongoing up until the last several years. You know, inflation goes up, the cost of milk isn't the same as it was in the eighties. And it's the same for, for everybody. And we have to have an additional employee for one, all the reporting requirements. Two, all the public outreach that was mentioned, that's part of the plan and education pieces. And three, the, the thing I keep coming back to just because it resonated so much with me, and I don't know if it does with everybody else, but you know, the, the 1,800 catch basins, or whatever, we have 1,700 and whatever. Under the, under the previous permit that we had, we weren't required at any particular time to go clean those out, maintain them. Under the phase two permit, we have to hit each and every one every other year. And we've got to track that and report that to the state. That's where the costs come in. So, you know, trying to get these, one of council's priorities has been strategic asset management. And the way that we do that, so we don't run into a situation like we're in right now and put council on a very difficult position, is by developing a program like we presented. You know, we recognize that it's extremely difficult and it's hard on businesses and residents. You know, is it something that we want to do? No, you know, we don't want to do that, but it's, we don't have much choice in the matter, except in how we fund it. And that's where I go back to supplementing it from the general fund, but then it's deciding what we no longer do somewhere else.
And is our only revenue stream for this through rates and GFCs? Is that typical, Jay? And I'm not sure if the FCS guys are on here still.
One of our only revenue other than?
Yeah, that's currently is our, our only revenue stream is rates only. We do not charge a stormwater GFC currently.
Yeah, GFC is only for new construction or, right? So if we have ebbs and flows in construction, you know, that are significant peaks and valleys, that's gonna be outside of our, outside of our rate structure right now, and we'll have to probably make those background up at some point, right? So if we go from building 100 houses one year to building two, that's probably gonna screw with our model, right? Totally get that. What is the percentage, I was trying to find it in the presentation. I'm not sure if somebody from S, FCS can articulate it better than me, but of the, of the rate, what is the percentage that goes to capital and what is the percentage that goes to ongoing operations and maintenance?
Yeah, I can dig that up for you in just a minute.
Thanks. Because if I recall correctly, the capital component is very small in the rate, like less than 5%. The majority of the rate is to cover our minimum obligations to the NPDES permit, correct?
Operations and maintenance.
Yeah, it's operations and maintenance. And we, the current rate has no capital in it all, and we can't pay the bills obviously, right? And so the capital improvement side of all that is not being funded.
So that, and so that's where I, I guess I land with this, is the rate isn't there to make us a giant bank account. The rate is there to pay for the basic subsistence that we need to operate this program and put a little bit of money away, like less than 5% of that away for those capital improvements down the road. So I'm settled on, very, very clearly settled to myself, like, when, when we got this outline to us, we, we've already been through this exercise with, with staff and the consultants. And we said, this needs to be as low as we possibly can have it, but we need the bare minimum sustenance to, to move this forward. And that's unfortunately where we're at, and now we're paying, paying the piper and it sucks. And I totally understand that, but we've got to right the ship. Otherwise, it's just gonna keep, it's just gonna keep tipping and, and, and we're, we're not gonna, not gonna be in a good position. And I can tell you from experience, filing a G20 letter and a statement of non-compliance to the Department of Ecology is also not something we are interested in probably pursuing either. Just because of the implications that then come to us from that. And then what that looks like for future growth and development, I would rather be on the positive side of a regulatory agency than, than kind of trying to catch up from the negative. So, that said, you know, it's, it's a pretty tough, pretty tough spot we're in, but I'm hard pressed to really, really wiggle any less than where we've already gotten to.
And I was able to dig that up, Councilman, it's, it's about 20%, a little bit less than that for capital.
Alright. So that means that 80% ish of the entire rate is operations and maintenance.
Correct. And, and other programmatic type operating costs.
Yeah. Right, the staff, the equipment, the materials to, right? And I, and again, going back to my earlier comment, when I was talking about all the issues that we don't really know about, 80% is gonna, that's gonna have to come from mostly that 80% in my opinion. That is not gonna necessarily be a capital improvement cost. You know, modernizing a stormwater facility or installing stormwater facilities because we don't have them to now treat, you know, treat runoff. Those are capital improvements, in my opinion. Everything else kind of falls under, because we haven't been maintaining it or there hasn't been funding to maintain it. It's, it's maintenance, it's, it's not improving necessarily the existing structures.
That's correct, I mean, we need to replace existing pipes, existing inlets, all sorts of things. So over time, that there has not on the capital side been a replacement program like we have with our water system and fire hydrants and pipelines and that sort of thing. But over time, we don't have a lot of funding in the budget for that. I think we can survive with what we have now for some years under the, yeah, under the proposed rate structure. But you are correct, there's things out there that we don't know about and we'll be getting into them once the program moves forward.
And I think I saw this somewhere, but I cannot for the life of me find it. So, can anyone tell me, at the end of the first year, what is that revenue figure that we're looking at? This increase between what everyone across the board, business and residents are paying now versus what we'll be taking in at that first, end of that first year under the new rate structure? What is that additional revenue for one year?
Togi, do you have that slide you could show?
Yeah, let me show that slide here. Is this the slide you're looking at, Jay?
Yeah.
Okay.
So that shows if you go to 2022, when you look at 2020 where the black line is, and Togi, what was that number again, eight something?
Yeah, just about, about 800,000.
And so in 2022, when you go to the top of the green line, that was about the 1.8 million right in there, 1718, something like that?
Correct, yep.
Yeah.
And we're looking at about a million bucks, I mean, essentially is what we're talking about. Not a million dollars. And I don't know if this is the forum to discuss it or if it's even something we want to consider, but we, we do have COVID funding coming through, that it might be worth looking at setting aside a portion of that to allow people to maybe apply for some assistance to offset the difference in the cost. Or I'm trying to think about some maybe out of the box methods we can use to give people a little bit of relief while not continuing to kick can down the road. Something to ponder.
Manager Knightman still?
Just some, some more food for thought, I guess. You know, I still recall, you know, council meetings and other discussions and, and seeing things. You know, there was a council meeting recently when a constituent talked to us about his business parking lot flooding. Right? We, we run the risk then of, of having tort claims due to damage because our storm system isn't, isn't operating efficiently or isn't operating effectively, right? So yes, in a way, these costs are, are high or they will initially be high. But, that said, we'll be, we'll have the funding to eliminate those problems. Right now, we, we are gonna beg, borrow and steal from either a different enterprise fund to deal with it or we're gonna be, it's gonna be a very difficult, very difficult conversation. Again, I, I, I look at this like it's, it's a painful, it's a painful step, but it's a necessary one. I, you know, and, and if, and if we want to look at it through the lens of small business and enterprise, we'll be providing them with a higher level of service. And the fact that the stormwater is going to be adequately managed and maintained throughout the city for the future, I would think that that's a, that's a positive investment, right? That's a positive thing for a lot of, a lot of the business community, for example. And the ability to stabilize our rate situation. So we're not seeing tremendous spikes up in, when we do hit a year of, let's say, low building or we, you know, or other challenges, right? We, the other thing we have to worry about are just climate change and natural disasters that continuously plague us and slope stability. And we've, we've got ditches and things that need maintain, maintenance. And the, the risk, when we weigh the risks out, what happens if, if we defer more maintenance on certain things? We assume a lot of risk and not on top of just regulatory requirements. So again, balancing risk with, with a rate and trying to figure out the delicate dance here, that's why we called the professionals to do this. It's, it's very difficult, I don't, I don't envy the job, but I think we incorporated plenty of criteria when we gave the original, you know, when we sort of gave the original direction to study the rate and, and discuss. So, again, I'm, I'm comfortable where we landed, it's just not, not the most rosy picture.
And City Manager Knightman, did we receive any public feedback in the last couple of weeks that should be shared with council for discussion this evening? Or is there anything else that staff wants us to consider outside of the presentation? Number 7.3? Number seven point three.
No, we've talked to a couple of, a couple of constituents, a couple of business owners. That have asked, you know, rate going to be. I know during the Spotlight Sheldon event. That we all specifically for public consumption, we had several comments. Come in asking questions about what the rate structure will be. We've done the brochures to let folks know. You know, mailed out to all city residents, all property owners, actually not just city residents. That we would, we are in the process of updating our stormwater fee. And why and explaining what stormwater is and, and why we need to do it. But I am more than happy to walk through council with the options that we have in order to fund this program. And what that will mean on the other side. I know we've discussed not very in-depth at all, but just discuss those, that potential. For funding in a different way. But what that means for the rest of operations in the city. You know, it's something for council to decide. You know, we present you the information and we will take your direction and do what you ask us to do.
So, yeah, so Brooke, I got a couple of comments about the flyer that was sent out, you know. And I don't know if you guys received those, saw those in the mail or that. But Brooke had talked to a couple of people. I actually expected more phone calls when that went to every mailbox. Jeff, I don't know if you heard from a lot of people with that informational flyer.
I just heard from two, two people requesting what the rate was proposed to be. And that was their only question and the response back was thank you. That was it.
Mary, Mayor Dorsey, may I?
Yeah, go ahead, Megan.
Alright, and I apologize, I'm drinking some water, so you might hear. And consider, and this is. Question probably for the consultant, as you were taking the analysis. Did you also take a look at like the five-year outlay for the economic development that's going to happen in this area? Take it, you know, I, we've been in the pandemic, although. The midst of the biggest housing boom that this city, you know, and local area I, I is seeing. We're, we're going to see a lot more businesses come in here and Joe, I know that we didn't get those four hundred houses, you know, built. At this very moment, but we're still working on that project. So, you know. And is there an opportunity? Have you, have you done that for other cities or with other cities? Because, you know, we're, if we're thinking about. That we're not going to have any revenue coming in. We need to be thinking about that too. Because from what I'm seeing in the numbers, we're projected to continue to blow up.
Talking the city budget or are you talking just generally speaking in Mason County or in Shelton?
No, I'm talking about in Shelton. So as far as business growth, you know, our urban growth plan. Annexation, all of those different things. Did we take that into consideration? That our, our, that longer term plan, you know, and the, and the projected revenues according to, you know. What we're thinking we can do there just because, you know, I, I, I am. I'm wondering if that we're, we've been so used to being in a situation of not having growth in our area. That we don't know how to maybe project.
Yeah, so Togi, could you respond to that? Yeah, you had growth in your model. I can't remember what the percentage was. Of a, a previous service growth. Could you grab that number?
Yeah, yeah, we did have a discussion about customer growth. And because growth has been fairly minimal historically and not knowing what that might look like in the future. We, we did not assume any growth in the final numbers. If that growth doesn't come in, we didn't want the numbers we're showing to have to be even higher. So we tried to be conservative in our growth projections. It, you know, if, if you had a hundred houses come online, I was just running some numbers here. At the seventeen seventy one per month, you know, that might be one percent of overall annual revenues. As of, you know, twenty twenty two, for example, so hundred houses. Fairly small impact, but you know, every little bit helps, of course, but without knowing what that might look like, we wanted to be a little bit conservative on that end.
So the other part of that is any additional revenue that we receive. If it's a hundred houses or a thousand. What the decision that then would go before council is those automatic. Increases that were built into the model, the three percent every year. You then have the option of buying those down or buying them down by half or, you know, buying them down completely for the next two years. But where the rates are set currently, we have those projected out. So unless there's something out there that, you know, again, we have no idea about yet. That is predictable and predictable growth. So that the business community and residents can count on that predictability and we're not doing this. Which is the discussion we're having tonight and you can see how much fun it is.
Regular rate setting updates too, is if we do get a big surge in development and growth. And have more rate pairs that came online, three years from now, once the stormwater master plan's done. We do a new rate study every two, three years. We include all that in our recent rate studies and, you know, and then project new rates again. So very beneficial to keep our, our rate studies ongoing long-term. FCS likes that, by the way, don't you, Togi? But it's good for us and good, good for everybody, right?
Make, so if I could, I want to jump on Megan's thought there with the discussion around growth that actually kind of sparked the thought. So would you be potentially cut more comfortable then, knowing that there's the possibility of a stronger growth figure? And we're maybe a little conservative increasing the GFC and decreasing the rate?
So we cannot increase the GFC over the eight seventy nine. That's a statutory limit based on our plan. So.
Alright, that answers that question.
Good thought, though.
But there, but there was, and you have to remind me, like, I remember, like, the port towns and number. Close to ours, but we're, ours is pretty low.
Sixty-five percent cheaper than most of the surrounding area.
It is. And, and part of that too, part of the reason why I was bringing the growth portion to is projections for unemployment rates. You know, we just gained another like twenty thousand jobs statewide this last month. You know, employers can't find enough folks to hire. And I'm looking at a report that I just quickly pulled out of this database called Jobs EU. And we're looking at a thirty-two point eight percent future job growth in the next couple of, like, three years. So, you know, with that comes, of course, more revenue and opportunities and more businesses and things like that.
So all of, all of the projections, everything comes out of the comprehensive plan. Basically, you take the numbers from the adopted comp plan that the commission at that time, I believe, adopted at the end of twenty seventeen. And the growth rate for Shelton and for its associated UGAs at that time. For the first, and I'm going off memory here, some numbers may be a little bit fuzzy, but it's. Was a little over one percent a year, something very low. And then in year. It was twenty, it's always a twenty-year comp plan, but I believe it was twenty twenty-four. Somewhere right around there, the growth weight kind of stayed flat and then just shot up. And there's a couple of reasons you do that. That won't get into the weeds here, but there's a couple of reasons you do that. The effect of that is that the projected growth rate affects those rates going forward. You know, if we take a one percent growth rate and apply it to the stormwater. For year, the sewer, the water, anything else, it's really not going to affect much. But if we apply that growth rate that starts in, I think it was twenty twenty-four, maybe twenty twenty-six. It would affect a whole lot and that's not necessarily a good thing. That's the yo-yo we're talking about.
Can you, one more time, re-explain? The, can you one more time re-explain why we're locked at eight seventy-nine for the GFC?
That was a calculation. I think that FCS group did for us a couple of presentations ago. Togi, you want to go through?
Yeah. So, so the GFC calculation, it's got to be cost-based. So we looked at. What your existing assets are in the stormwater utility, what you plan to complete over the next six years. You divide that by your customer base and that's the maximum allowable GFC. And over time, as you add assets, you can recalculate that and update that and you might come up with a different number. And well, at this point in time, eight seventy-nine is the cap for the stormwater utility. We do recommend for future years, applying an inflationary adjustment based on a construction cost index, for example. But that's typically in the two to four percent range per year, not likely to be significantly increased in any one year. But that's to comply with the RCW that defines how you can calculate that GFC.
Okay, thank you.
But we could lower that, correct?
It is the maximum and so council could come in at a lower number, correct?
Infill lots, are they going to be subject to GFCs if we were to approve this plan? Because right now the infill lots aren't being subject to sewer and water GFCs, correct?
Yeah, so we are going to, as part of the code update that we're currently undertaking, I think we're starting to lay it actually. We're going to look at a special infill ordinance that will apply only to infill lots and we'll have to define those pretty narrowly. But define what infill is, but if that's something that council wants to consider, we would exempt them as part of that ordinance, not necessarily this one.
I mean, infill lots are just a lot where there was a home or a business at one time and it's gone or down, down, correct?
Not necessarily. An infill lot could be that, but it could also be lots that were created twenty years ago. And never had anything built on. Now, what is a little bit different than infill. Although it applies in somewhat the same circumstances is if somebody had a water and sewer connection already. And then the house burnt down, but the connection is still there, they wouldn't have to pay the fee again. But if it's a lot that's never been built on, I know there's several up on Angle Side that has never had a homeowner or any kind of structure. Then they would still have to pay the GFCs if there was never a hookup there previously. But when we do the infill ordinance to encourage development on those plots, then that's something that council can consider as part of that ordinance.
Thank you.
Any more hands, any more questions? Alright, you know, I'd like to just add a little bit, we haven't really had anything, but. I think everybody's had some good, just good points tonight. It looks to me like. We all, we all know something needs to be done. Deidre had a good point about. Maybe holding off, you know, maybe we could do it later, but my question would be, okay. When would that be? I mean, the, the longer we wait, the higher this, the, the farther we're going to fall behind. And Joe had some good points and Eric had, he, Eric had some great points about. Basically, sticking up for the businessman and, and the local, and, and the citizens. I think we all know that. I just, I just feel like something needs to be done. That's, that's all I'm going to say for now. Anybody else? Alright. Any further, any new items for discussion tonight?
Can talk about storm rates? Talk about sewer rates, we can talk about those too.
Well, that's another, that was one of my, while I'm sitting here thinking about it, you know, a few years ago. I think the sewer rates went up like forty percent or something because nothing was done for such a long time. And we're going to be in the same boat.
And, but this council got those down and lowered the overall cost of the sewer rates and lowered the overall time. For, for the residents. So we council identified that opportunity and we took advantage of that for the refi. So that's great.
So I got a great update to share with you folks. The Kubota filter project up at the membrane plant. That council passed right the first of the year. They came in yesterday in a big cargo container. And our guys went and pulled out the old filters and are cleaning them up and getting ready to put in the new ones. Well, the second cargo container was on a different ship, I guess. It's going to be here tomorrow morning. So we were all gun hole on the filter replacement. I mean, it's all hands on deck. I got pictures of the people up there. We got everybody in Public Works doing filters right now. So it's a good thing. We'll make that system very, very reliable again. And proactive is the word, right? That we're being proactive and planning things out. And trying to get out of reactive mode is what we're trying to do here in Public Works.
You can tell we know how to party, talking about filters.
Can we have a party? Can we come down and party and watch this process?
Yeah, so they're going in. Manager Knighton, if you want to set up a quick tour while they're putting them together and stuff, it's pretty safe. The overhead crane will be done in the morning because we've got to lift them up and get them over to an area where we're staging. And then we can drop them in, but if people are interested, if you want to get ahold of, of, of Manager Knighton or I. We can get you up there to check it out tomorrow or the next day.
Might be a great opportunity to get some video to share, show, show all the hard work Public Works is doing.
Yeah, I've got a bunch of pictures already, no video yet, but tomorrow we'll, we'll talk about that. So we can send you guys some video clips if you want to see that.
We won't film the ones coming out.
The greatest looking things, they're ripped, torn, all that. The new ones going in are, are a nice looking those, good deal.
Yeah, I wanted to ask Jay if we can get a list by the next meeting. Of what, with this permit, what's required to upgrade, what pipes, what streets? Estimated cost.
Available counselor, that's in the current budget and the capital page, it's like page thirty of the budget. I can grab it real quick.
I have the budget in the car. I can, I can look at that.
You'll see storm, street, transportation, they're all in there. That was given to FCS and that's the, the capital improvement plan?
I, I know, I, I want to know what, with the phase two permit, what is required to be in compliance? What do we have to do this year to be in compliance? Is there something next year that we have to do differently to be in compliance? I mean, not the capital plan, what part of this phase two permit? Keeps us in compliance? I mean. New person, we need to clean the drains every other year. I, I understand all that. We bought this, we bought the new pump truck, you know, so. What part of this permit is, is making our maintenance go up? Other than cleaning it, cleaning the, the drains every two years, every other year and hiring another person.
So I got great information for you. Go to the city website, go to the Public Works page. Go to stormwater under Public Works, all the way down at the bottom, you'll see two documents down there. Browse through them and email me or Manager Knighton if you have any questions. But there is a ton of information there of what we're, we're doing and what we have to do to meet these permit requirements.
It also has dates for future years of when we need to hit those goals.
Okay, and also. Okay, and also, we, and this may be a question for Jeff, I don't know, maybe Jay. So, we signed that, we, we signed on this permit a little bit early, like what, a year early? Are we required to start now because we're, we're, we have voted on this permit already, or do we, it was a year before we got started being compliant?
Twenty twenty, twenty twenty was when we started that permit, and that, that's when it was basically told to us that we were gonna start that.
Well, according to some documentation you guys gave us a few meetings ago, it was not required until like the end of next year.
Yeah, that, that was the two thousand nineteen storm water management manual. That went out, that was in twenty twenty three. What we're doing is trying to take things off the list, the easier ones. Uh, most of the developers and engineers are used to the new manual. We just thought it was a good idea. But if you go to the, the website, you'll look at all the dates are in there and what we need to do by those dates.
Okay, so we're officially under the phase two permit today.
Oh, yeah.
As of twenty twenty.
As of last year, yeah.
And Eric, you know, the, the brunt of these costs that, you know, come up, it, it's not just, not necessarily just, you know, ditches and things like that and catch basins. We have um, we have other sort of intricate stormwater facilities, you know, retention ponds, that sort of thing. Sometimes ultimately what ends up happening is we have to totally reconstruct a facility because it never functioned as it was supposed to, or the maintenance is so far gone on it that now we have to, you know, totally re-engineer it, right? Um, and there's gonna be some costs with that, some significant cost.
That's what I wanna know.
Yeah, and those, and those facilities, I'm afraid we won't know the status of those facilities until we start a full-on inspection program, which, again, we need the revenue and the position on staff to be able to go around and inspect all of these stormwater facilities. First of all, locate them all, which I'm also reasonably confident that that is gonna be difficult to do um, in some cases where we haven't had uh, maintenance in quite a long time. Locate them all and then inspect them and make sure they're, figure out where they're at, and then start programming projects to go maintain and repair and bring things back up to a standard. Um, I don't believe we'll see, I, I, I mean, I, I, it's not, it's not a negative thing at all, but I believe that's gonna take a year or more to just assemble that baseline set of data.
So I'm looking at a bullet point in the prevent plan, and it says storm water management action planning. Shelton is a new permitting exempt from this requirement for this permit term, July one, um, two thousand nineteen to July thirty first, twenty twenty four, as described in the footnote. So is that what Eric's asking about? Is that um, we have until twenty twenty four to do the plan?
Sorry, can you provide me that bullet point?
Sure, page four, or page two, rather, the plan, sorry, p- page four, the PDF.
I think it printed out differently.
Yeah, print it up, let me get online and look at what you're looking at.
Yeah, for sure. Yeah, for sure. It's um, uh, section two point O, storm water planning. It's the two point one permit requirements. And it's the very last bullet of the section. It's like, right, I mean, literally, I just quick started scanning through.
She might be in the, are you in the annual report? Are you in the uh?
I'm in the storm water waste management program.
Okay, the, the twenty twenty one storm water management plan tab?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, um, uh,
She said a two point one, I think.
Yeah.
Page four of one one.
Yeah, so the intro is one. Yeah, and then it's the very, yeah.
Very last, you said the very last one, is that correct?
Yep, it's the very last bullet of pa- of um, two point one permit requirement.
Yeah, so I mean, that is a, a storm water action planning, the, the SNAP, uh, that is gonna be probably part of our new permit in twenty twenty four. So this permit's renewed every four years, right? And so there's requirements coming at us in the future that we don't have to implement right now. So what that statement is, is as a new permitting, they don't require that. But in the future, uh, there, obviously, there's more plan elements that every four years as we get updated, uh, new plan elements come in. Especially if we, as we resolve uh, other plan elements.
Right.
Action of the latest plan and whatever, the list keeps changing every four years, right?
Right, right, right. So the question is, um, we're required to do a quality improvement plan every four years and submit that as part of our um, SNAP process. Um, and in the process that we're in right now, we are doing quality improvement by assessing our stormwater rates, identifying how we can get ahead of this next plan. So the question is as we are in grim permit right now, we know that we have staff person that needed to be added so that we can make sure that we can clean the catch basins. We absolutely know that our infrastructure in our town is in need of a lot of repair. Now, to Eric's point, we have an assessment process to understand what and where we need to do, need to do quality improvement on our sewer system. And this tells me, and maybe I need more information, but this tells me that we have a little bit more time to understand, and understanding also, we need to get the reserves in because there are gonna be stuff and we are subjected to work claims and things like that for the things that are our responsibility to fix. So I, I, I need to understand from, from staff. Are, are we are we not balancing an urge, the urgency properly for, for the community, considering we're in a pandemic? We have rates that we need to improve. We're already in a permit situation. We're already mitigating what we need to be able to deliver on. And now we're, we're looking at this, and we've got, you know, may, maybe a little bit more wiggle room than we were, you know, anticipating here.
If you, if you flip through all the pages though, and look at all those looming dates, uh, we need to get on top of this, right? By twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four, a lot of dates. Um, go to page eight, public education and outreach. There's things that we need to be doing by August twenty first of this year. Uh, anyways, flip through the whole document and get with manager Knighton, if you have any questions about it. But there's a lot of things we need to be ramping up on. Um, and, and I, I didn't mention this earlier, but we have two vacant storm water positions that we have not backfilled right now, that we have two people, uh, two FTEs on hold right now that we're not out there cleaning catch basins and doing all those things because we don't have the rate to, to pay for it. So we threw attrition and such, we've artificially downsized the storm water group uh, to try to live within our means here, but we're getting to a breaking point, uh, especially with the list of items that we gotta, to implement here.
The council member fees, I just wanna make sure I'm looking at the right thing here. So uh, you're looking at uh, section two point O, storm water planning, two point one, the permit requirements.
Yep, and if you go all the way down, because it says, it says section S five point A, point three, point A and B requires, and then it goes down the next required sections. Then there's the low impact development, the code relation, related requirements, and then right below that, it says storm water management action planning, SNAP. Shelton is a new permitting and is exempt from this requirement for this permit term of July one, two thousand nineteen to July thirty first, twenty twenty four, as described in the footnote three of this permit, knowing that we're already a couple of years into this permit. So yes, definitely, we have to have. I mean, you all, this plan is our quality improvement plan for the, my point is, is that I think that we have just a hair of a wiggle room here in the rest of twenty twenty. You know, and
So are you, are you, it's a, 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 uh, SNAP one, two, or three? Okay, I'm looking at the one on the, on our website, not in the packet. So I'm, I just wanna make sure I'm looking at the right one.
A footnote. It's as of, it's uh, the, the footnote here is Sydney Shelton Storm Water Management Plan, March twenty twenty one. It's the one that is on the storm water page.
It's on page four on the website, Jeff. I just am following right along with what she just read.
Okay.
Yeah. So a- again, you know, totally understand where we are. We need to be, you know, driving the change and I, I wanna be thoughtful about
one, two, and three.
Timing that we have here to have a little bit more conversation, you know, to be able to meet the needs of our community. Um, and and I think that we need to have more conversations about um, the NPDES um, um, waivers and um, you know, I, I, I just, I, I, oh goodness, sorry. The dog, my husband's, my husband is working offsite this week, so.
Okay, uh, so.
I was gonna say, I read that to mean we have to be compliant with the phase two permit by July thirty one, twenty twenty four. Is that, is that, am I, am I reading that correctly too? Is that, is that what I understand? So in order for us, basically, once we exceeded ten thousand, ten thousand or greater population, we were under the phase two umbrella. And then we had, the clock starts and the clock stops essentially at on July thirty first, twenty twenty four. And therefore, we have to be fully compliant with the, with the criteria laid out in the Western Washington Storm Water Management Manual that we adopted, correct?
That's uh, my reading as well, but I wanna confirm that with Jay and talk with him uh, outside of this meeting.
Sure, no problem.
All right. People, is there anything else we wanna talk about tonight?
Warm weather back.
I still gotta go finish a grant tonight, so.
Oh.
You'll, the only other grant, the only other uh, question that I really was interested in talking more about, but um, it's, it's nothing, again, that really affects, I think, the rate side of the house. It's just the change with the storm, the phase two permit. Um, is just, how are we operationally gonna deal with? Um, I'm aware that we have some connections to our city stormwater system that would be essentially unpermitted, or, you know, um, I, I wanna make sure that we've got a really good process of sort of hammering out with uh, either it's the homeowner, residents, or whomever made the connection to uh, rehabilitate that back to its original design. Um, can you talk a little bit about how we're gonna tackle those types of things?
Yeah, uh, so currently in the municipal code, uh, listed discharges uh, aren't allowed, is basically what it says, right? Um, that over time, if you go to page seventeen, there's that table six point one in the document we were talking about earlier, that uh, how, what we have to do in the coming years uh, uh, to our planned activities for lis- listed discharge and eliminate, elimination. That's on page seventeen. Uh, there's a whole section of that uh, in here. So uh, currently, our current process is, is uh, we have a municipal code provision. There are no uh, fees for violations. There aren't any uh, municipal court citations, anything of such. Um, all of that will need to be developed in the coming years, and we'll have to update our municipal code. That's when you ask, and you ask, and somebody still doesn't do what they need to do. And um, that's when you have to go to the enforcement mechanism, right? So we never start there. Obviously, we start with information, education. So for example, uh, the, the marijuana shop that's growing down here near the bay, they have a, a, like a ten thousand square foot warehouse that they're growing marijuana in. Uh, their storm drain is connected to the sewer line. It was reported anonymously by somebody. And uh, anyways, uh, we're working with them to get it disconnected. Uh, they have till September uh, to go do that. Uh, now, when we go on September, if it's not done, then we start talking some more. Um, uh, another thing is the uh, engineering standards manual. Uh, basically says that when you build your development, whatever manual you were under, where there was the two thousand five ecology manual or the two thousand nineteen, that you need to comply with all the O and M elements of that manual. So that uh, in itself, somebody needs to catch up with the Costco. Well, we don't have a Costco here, but Fred Meyers, Walmart, all of that, that uh, what were you supposed to put in? Is it still there? Are you maintaining it? You know, start checking all the boxes, you know, every year or so on that, and give a bunch of education, obviously. And uh, hopefully not get into any enforcement type of actions. So that's sort of the plan. Uh, the last one is, is uh, private facilities, like an apartment site, um, have a, a storm water agreement with the city. Um, that document's already done with our city attorney. And uh, basically, it's a contract between the private property owner and the city saying that you're following your operations and maintenance plan for that particular facility that you put in. You're gonna submit reports to us every year, and it's a covenant. It gets recorded against the property and runs with the, the, the land. So those are some of the things we have going on right now.
Yeah, and I guess I would say, you know, from a council member perspective, I am preparing myself for the phone calls about um, the mitigation work and the repairs and that sort of thing versus the phone calls about the exorbitant rate. Um, because I do believe, um, because of the, sort of some of that lack of oversight over the system, that there are gonna be a lot of things that we're gonna have to try to correct. And we're gonna have to have the right relationship there with uh, you know, commercial or residential landowners that may not have done something permitted or legal, um, but had, you know, let that go for several years. Um, those are things that we're gonna truly hear about.
Yeah, so councilman, I mean, hit the nail on the head. Uh, there's a, a few uh, contact stormwater vaults out there. There are these cool cartridges that there's, like the membrane filters at the wastewater plant, the exact same thing. They're smaller, they're in vaults in parking lots. Um, those have not been maintained for some time on uh, some private sites. Once we get some people to get them out there, start talking to them, to get them to clean their vaults out, put new filters in, and uh, you know, keep them maintained. Um, they're going to go unmaintained, and they're basically being bypassed right now, right? So.
Okay, I see Megan has a hand up. Anyone else?
Foundation for staff, as you are taking a relook at the storm water management program, um, reemphasis around, um, and your passion emphasis around um, awareness and education for the community. That seems like the biggest thing, and to Joe's point also, uh, as far as what our deliverables are to the state during this time. Um, um, I remind me, um, the interdisciplinary team is, is your team, Jay, right?
That's correct. The, the storm water group is actually in the uh, engineering and operations division. So uh, right now, the, in, in the future, the city engineer will have a storm water person in the engineering department, monitoring things, going out and inspecting things, doing the public outreach, you know, working on the websites, uh, old press releases, that sort of stuff. The actual uh, storm water maintenance group is based out of the main wastewater plant that I'm at right now. Uh, that's Brent Armstrong is the supervisor of that. And uh, those are the guys that are out, you know, maintaining the system, cleaning catch basins, you know, fixing things, weed eating, flooding. A street sweeping is out of the maintenance division over on Pine Street. That's Mike Alba. So he's out there, you know, keeping the streets clean and debris off. So it is a public works operation is maybe the answer you're looking for.
Yeah, I just was, and again, I was just cruising back through this again, um, to make sure that I fully understood. What our roles and responsibilities are and then, um, you know, what our timelines are. So I think that, um, you know. Take a, take a look at, um, you know, section, um. Sorry. Like our requirements for public involvement and whatnot and the dates there, um. You know, and I, and taking a look at what we're required to report to the state by um twenty twenty-three. I think that um, we're in a pretty good position to be able to remain compliant with our um process. And then um, with what you have outlined here and the timing of it. It looks like, you know, we're required by twenty twenty-three to understand, like you were saying, all of our illicit dumping and whatnot. Um, and be able to get that rectified and um. You know, looking at twenty twenty-three, that means that, you know, we have a heck of a lot of assessment that needs to happen.
That's correct. That's where that new employee in twenty twenty-two, first thing next year is so important because I'm not gonna meet compliance here. With all this monitoring and website information and public outreach and all these things that we need to go do. You know, I need somebody managing all that. And our, our engineering division's at one person right now. So um, anyways, uh, that's Ken. And he's trying his best, right? But uh, and, and Jeff and I are working on staffing. So uh, but yeah, certainly twenty twenty-two, that position is key to being able to uh respond to all these program elements.
And we, and we approved one new staff. To be added to the budget, so we already accounted for that, correct?
That's in the rate structure. That's in twenty twenty-two.
That's the new staff, because we already added one staff, right?
Already added one, but that person isn't currently here though. The FTE is there, but I, we didn't, didn't put the person on. Because the rate increase never happened, so we held on it.
Okay, thank you. I'm, thanks for entertaining me for another minute.
All right, everybody, do we have anything else tonight? See any more hands? James is shaking his head. So this uh, this um study session is adjourned at seven fifty-three.